Call order of the January 25th Regular Meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. First item of business is item 1.2, Adoption of the Agenda. An entertaining motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will move to item 2.1, Announcements, and Shawna will recognize the gifts.
All right. I'm just going to preface this by saying, since this is our second board meeting of the month, the number I'm going to read is considerably smaller than the normal number, just because there's been less time in between meetings. So, there were four gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $698.52, and it's recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meetings, February 3rd, a work session of the board at 7:00 PM, and February 8th, a regular meeting of the board at 7:00 PM, and then there will be our comments to the board in the listening session at 6:30 as we started this evening as our new board practice.
Jonathan, can we clarify on February 3rd, the work session, what time that starts?
7:00 PM.
The mayor's and managers.
Oh, okay.
That's by 30:00 PM that night.
Thank you, sir.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I was confused.
My notes at 7:00 PM.
Yep, that's right.
No, that's right. I was just confused because I thought we changed it.
Awesome.
That's right.
Perfect. We'll move to item 2.2, Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you, Jonathan. Just have one thing this evening, a quick reminder really more for the public, that we are now at the end of our first semester. So our staff have workshop and planning days the end of this week, on Thursday and Friday. Students therefore have a shortened week. They're wrapping up their school week tomorrow, Wednesday, and will return for second semester Monday, January 31st. That's my update.
Excellent. Okay, item 3.0, approval for consent agenda. I entertain a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It'll take us to item 4.1, Operational Update, and I believe we're going to invite Executive Director Johnson.
Yep.
And maybe Superintendent Lennox is going to set the stage.
Correct. Yep, I definitely will as Darren comes up tonight.
Is his walk-up music going to come on?
We do want to provide an update on our schools for you, and more specifically, what we really want to talk about is providing some additional context to how schools have been navigating the conditions that are being created by COVID-19 and making decisions. You know, to explain how this works to the community, one of my colleagues in a metro school district here used the analogy of a snowstorm, or in making winter weather decisions. And he said, you see with weather, the conditions for neighboring school districts are often very similar, especially when it comes to things like temperature, or wind chill, snow accumulation, even the timing or duration of a weather event. So as a result, when you know those factors, you often see groups of geographically located districts making very similar, the same decisions about what they're going to do in terms of keeping their schools open or closing their schools. But if you move only a few miles, you know, any direction, north, south, east, or west, the conditions can be dramatically different, and school districts are making very, very different decisions about what they're going to do in and for their schools. And that's been true of this pandemic as well. The conditions really haven't been the same from school district to school district. And in fact, districts really have seen quite different conditions, and have had to respond individually then to the unique situations that are developing within their own schools. So when districts are asked, why are you not doing what your next-door neighbor or a neighboring district is doing, generally the answer to that is because they're not experiencing necessarily the same conditions that your district is. You know, each district has unique circumstances, and here in Moundsview, we weigh those across our classrooms, our, you know, grade levels, and our individual school programs to make decisions. And to be clear, our decision-making here really has been and continues to be a team effort. We gather together, we look at what's happening, and work collaboratively on decisions. But rather than bring all of the people involved in those decisions, a full administrative team forward in front of you tonight, Darren Johnson, our Executive Director of School Management, has volunteered to come forward and represent collectively a group of our colleagues, and share a bit more about some of the specific areas of focus, as well as the conditions that we've been facing here in the school district. So I'll turn it over to Darren.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Weinhegen and members of the school board. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to represent members of the executive team and district administration for tonight's operational update. As you may recall, when we entered this school year, the governor and state officials asked school districts to prioritize in-person learning for our students. As a result, we have committed to do that for the more than 11,000 students we serve in Moundsview Public Schools, as long as it has been safe and possible to do so. Throughout this challenging year, district administrators continue to work collaboratively with key leaders and employee groups in our district, and have considered numerous variables when making decisions that affect the students and families we serve. As part of those ongoing discussions, we have addressed many factors that go into our ability to operate our schools. Tonight, I would like to share some information about transportation, nutrition services, student support, as well as staffing, and talk about how they have continued to impact our schools. Throughout the first semester of the school year, our transportation department and contracted vendors have been hard at work providing reliable transportation for the students and families of the Moundsview School District. Each day, our buses run over 125 total routes, which is no small feat considering the challenges of driver shortages being faced by bus companies and shuttle providers across the Twin Cities and throughout the country. Staffing issues have been present in the transportation industry since the start of this pandemic, and some school districts have even had to shift temporarily to distance learning due to driver shortages. But due to the dedication of the professionals on the Moundsview team, our students and families have been far less affected than others in neighboring districts. While families in other districts have needed to frequently adjust morning schedules and plans to get children to school, this has been a rare occurrence in Moundsview. The dependability of American student transportation, as well as the providers of our small routes and shuttle services, have provided families with a level of service that is appreciated and trusted by our district community. In our Nutrition Services Department, we have been fortunate that our vendors have been able to provide food and non-food products to Moundsview schools during this pandemic. Many other school districts in Minnesota and across the country have had supply chain issues. While at times we have had some struggles and have not been able to get everything we want, we have worked closely with our vendors to have little to no interruption with the service we provide our programs and schools. Our dedicated and experienced Nutrition Services staff has utilized their relationships with vendors across the state to provide our students with the quality products we have come to expect and appreciate in our school cafeterias. They have also worked across our system to share food, supplies, and even staffing to make sure students are receiving quality meals daily at all of our schools and programs. As you know, supporting our students and providing for them what they need goes well past our work in the Transportation and Nutrition Services Departments. In the Student Support Realm, our partnerships with mental health providers continue even during these challenging times. While meetings with counselors and therapists have not always been able to continue in person, telehealth appointments have become increasingly common as we partner with families and local professionals to support the mental and emotional health needs of our students. Additionally, the work of our site-level deans, equity specialists, cultural liaisons, and school nurses have supported the COVID-based needs of our families and students. Helping families locate testing and vaccination sites, as well as providing information related to isolation and quarantine requirements, have served as a needed resource in our community during this pandemic. Those of you who are familiar with our district understand it is the hard-working staff that make our schools and programs excellent. For some districts, staffing shortages have required them to temporarily shift their learning models into distance learning for classrooms, grade levels, or schools. During the first part of the school year, there have been times when employee absences in our district have made this school year difficult, and we too have needed to consider changes to our learning model. Our commitment to in-person learning has required creativity and collaboration from our staff, and patience and understanding from our students and families. However, I am pleased to report that even though we've had some tough days this fall and winter, the data is trending in the right direction, and we are experiencing fewer days where absences are impacting our ability to provide a quality learning experience for the students in Moundsview. We are pleased to let you know that leaders from all of our employee groups have been working collaboratively with district staff to address the changing conditions created by the pandemic, and these dedicated staff are continuing to provide the high level of service our students and families have come to expect. Our teachers, paraeducators, office staff, support staff, custodians, transportation and nutrition services professionals, and administrators have made this year successful, and for that, our entire community is grateful. This work is not a one-size-fits-all plan. For all members of our community, this work has not been easy. Solutions one day bring light to a new set of challenges the next. We continue to work collectively to make the best decisions we can, with the information we have available at that time on a daily basis. As each phase of the pandemic evolves, a new set of challenges are presented, and another shift to our model needs consideration. With all of that being said, none of this has been the perfect plan. However, as a district, we remain committed to doing this work well. And that ends my report.
Thank you.
You know, I would just say, it truly is a team effort. I mean, you're watching Darren up here independently present all of this information, but it is a complete and total team effort. Many, many people involved in the decisions that are being made daily. Darren has truly taken on a leadership role in that work, but is working with all kinds of people. And I really want to thank not only Darren, but leaders across all of our employee groups. We could not do this without them working with us in partnership. That is just critically important. And it's been challenging work. You know, it's not been easy for any of them. People have really strong feelings on all sides of every decision that's being made. So the fact that they continue to show up, to come back, to work collaboratively in partnership is just really, really outstanding, and I can't do enough but thank them for all that they're doing to help us navigate these incredibly challenging times. So thank you to Darren, thank you to all the leaders across all of our employee groups. You are very, very much appreciated for all you're doing for our students, staff, and families in the district. So thank you, Darren, and thank the board, I mean, for your partnership. This has not been easy for you or for any of us, so we truly do appreciate you working with us and supporting the work as we move forward. Thank you.
Well, we have Darren in the hot seat. I might open it up if there are any questions from board members.
I mean, not a question, but I guess just I just want to comment on how it's great to hear the data is starting to trend back in a, you know, in the right direction, because I think a couple of weeks ago, things were a little hairy in how some of the classrooms at the high school, at Moundsview High School, and I'm sure Irondale as well, were having to be, you know, kind of managed and supervised. You know, one teacher out in the hall kind of keeping an eye on both, but I think that it is that type of creativity and really the willingness of our professionals in the buildings to really figure out a way to keep kids in school and keep them in the buildings. And I just really appreciate all that, you know, echo what Chris just said with our employee groups, appreciate the partnership. It is truly, we couldn't do it without our employees, and I think also just the, you know, the flexibility and grace that the students and families have demonstrated throughout all this too, and knowing it isn't perfect, and we're doing the best we can to kind of keep kids in school. So just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra.
Yeah, I would echo that. As someone who works for a school district and has many friends and colleagues who work for other school districts, we are doing a phenomenal job here in Moundsview, keeping schools open, keeping buses running, keeping lunches being served. So just thank you for all that work that goes into that, because I know it's not easy, but it's really noticed that this is running really smoothly. When my third grader is bummed that she has two days off because she doesn't want, like, she is mad that there is no school Thursday and Friday because she just is so happy to be in school. So it's just, it really shows that people are putting in hard work, and it's appreciated.
Yeah. I would agree completely. I would echo all those same comments. I won't be completely redundant, but I do want to say thank you so much to the staff and for all of that you guys are doing. I think it's extremely difficult work. I like Shawna, I mean, I have a lot of friends and family that are working in school districts, and I hear some of the concerns from them, and like I said, I just don't hear a lot of those same issues, right? And that's a testament to the leadership in this district, and it's a testament to the people working every single day in a very difficult environment and in a different difficult situation. And I also want to thank you, both you and Chris, for the update, because I do think, again, one of the big concerns that I've heard consistently is just, again, wanting more and more communication about what's been done and to learn more about the decision criteria. So the fact that you guys, you know, had talked about that today, I think that's really important that we continue to do that. So I appreciate you guys sharing the update, and I thought that was well said. I think that will shed a lot of light and help educate a lot of members of the community who don't necessarily understand how much goes into these decisions and how much or how many factors have to be looked at, and kind of the differences between the districts, because I have heard those comments from a lot of, a lot of community members. So again, appreciate the update and appreciate all the work that you guys are doing.
Any other thoughts? Yolanda, I think you hit on something really key in that, you know, we've been hearing from folks that they want to kind of demystify what's happening behind the scenes, because this is important. We're in the middle of a public health crisis, there's a lot of decisions being made, and I think this agenda item really served to help to address some of those. So thank you for pulling it together to make the time. I mean, I'm going to quote you, Darren, you said this work hasn't been easy, and that might be the understatement of a pandemic. So appreciate the work that all of you are doing, as my colleagues have shared. I did want to take just a minute, and I think we need to continuously do this, to talk about how we do our work, and how we do our work together and in partnership. And, you know, because we hear this, and we're increasingly hearing this, as decision points are coming forward, and as we're observing other school districts, some of them who are, you know, adjacent to us, who are neighbors to us, operating in a different way. And to remind our community that, you know, for years, the Moundsview Public Schools has operated under a policy governance framework, arguably one of the leaders in the nation in this, I mean, 30 years of policy governance. You know, I remind myself, you know, one of the first things that I hear from folks when they talk about our schools and our community is, we moved here for the schools. Well, the schools have been operating really well under this framework, and it's been a really challenging couple of years. I think everybody in this room, administration and the board, would agree with that. But a reminder that the board really does focus on policy decisions, but not specific management of policy decisions, high-level policy framework decisions. And then we really rely on our licensed educators, our professional staff, to administer the management of the district. And that's been a tradition in this school district for as long as I've been on the board. Actually, I can now say for as long as everybody has been on the board, with Mary Jo departing. And I think it's a little bit of the secret sauce of what we do and how we do it here in the Moundsview Public Schools. And, you know, again, we put a lot of, a lot of weight on the superintendent, on his administrative team, to carry out the day-to-day operations and decisions of the work. That's not to say that this board doesn't have their hands on everything all the time. You know, Chris might get tired of talking to us, because we are in constant consultation with the superintendent as he's, you know, making decisions, as he's looking for counsel, as he's providing advice. So, you know, while this board doesn't take formal votes on, you know, day-to-day issues, we are a part of that decision-making process, and it really is a partnership. So I just want to take a minute, you know, tonight, to acknowledge the important work that the superintendent does, to acknowledge that this board has been really intentional, you know, to listen to the community, but also to not necessarily, you know, weigh in based on the loudest voice. And I can tell you, and I think my board colleagues would agree, that for every person that, you know, has one opinion, we're hearing from somebody else who has a different opinion. So we've been really strident in ensuring that we're leading with a public health lens, we're listening to the experts, including our administration, and if you pay attention to our agendas, every single action item has an administrative recommendation. So when we are, when we are making a decision, and we could make a decision that is counter to the administrative recommendation, but that carries a lot of weight for this governing body, and it should. And we, as board members, have a responsibility for that. So we're listening to the experts, we're consulting with the experts, we're listening to the community, we're consulting with the community, and I think we're all better for it. And, you know, the reports you just heard, the fact that, you know, on any given day, we've still got, you know, 11,000-ish kids still going to school and doing it safely, you know, we're committed to doing that, and really appreciative for the work of the administration in ensuring that that happens. And the administration and all of the staff, you know, up and down the district. So I just want to, you know, affirm to you, to you, Darren, you know, the cabinet and all of our team, we are, we are behind you. Obviously, as things change, and this is a pandemic, that none of us have ever been through. You know, we could be sitting here in two weeks and be living in a different place. We were, you know, two weeks ago, we weren't talking about Omicron, we weren't talking about some of these other things. So just want to, you know, affirm that partnership, on the confidence that we have in your leadership, and in reaffirm this commitment to how we do this work together, because it has worked for a long time, it has been working through a really challenging pandemic, and I believe it's going to continue to work and serve, you know, the school district, our kids, our staff, and our community for a very, very long time. So much gratitude and appreciation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move us to item 5.1, Quarterly Budget Amendments and Report, and welcome up Bernice. Good evening.
I'm here to address the quarterly report update. This is routine business. Each quarter, the district reviews budget variances and makes amendments as additional information is available. There are four budget amendments for this reporting period. The first amendment is for revenues, a decrease in general fund revenues for gen ed adjustment. The second is for an increase in community services due to the S R 3 grant. The third is the increase in general fund revenues for pandemic enrollment loss. The fourth is an increase, and an offset revenue to all of these, to the building-generated funds.
And the administrative recommendation would be approved?
Approved, correct.
The amendments, all right. This is like a whole theme to the, I love it. So any questions for Bernice on these amendments? And again, these are routine, and, you know, we just kind of adjust these on a quarterly basis. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the amendments as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will move to item 5.2, 2022-2023 Budget Assumptions. Hard to believe that we're already starting to plan for next year.
Correct. The fiscal year 2022-23 budget assumptions have been developed with input from the school board through previous work sessions and school board meetings. The budget process continues as scheduled per the budget timelines. The next budget phase will provide specific allocations to building principles so they can begin the planning process necessary to develop building-specific budgets. The attached includes those initial assumptions as discussed in previous meetings. Major points of the budget assumptions include enrollment, which we will continue to track enrollment throughout the year. The enrollment projection is conservative. And so revenue projections include a 2% increase in the general education formula over the 21-22 school year. Expenditure projections provide for licensed staffing allocations that maintain the same class size ranges as 21-22. The assumptions presented project a fund balance at June 2022 of $39 million. This remains within our unassigned fund balance and risk analysis. Work will continue with the budget details, and the final budget will be presented for approval in June of 2022. approval in June of 2022. Revenues and expenses are projected at $164 million each. It's recommended the board approve the budget assumptions as presented.
If any questions on the, the assumption, I know we spent a fair amount of time...
You know, inflation has poked up its head recently. Is that somehow figured into some of our assumptions?
Correct, that is correct. There's some categories that we did define and have special amounts allocated to, including some of the ones that we're currently working with, and so those that we're in some negotiations with. And so there's some areas that utilities as well, supplies remains stable, contracts, benefits, and salaries and benefits follow what was settled through the contract settlements.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And this is the same, we had this as a report item...
Correct.
At our last meeting, right? And nothing has changed since then?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Hearing other questions, I entertain a motion to approve the assumptions as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Bernice.
Thank you.
Great work on that.
Thank you.
We'll move to item 6.1, Updates. Mr. Demay, we're, what, six days out from a legislative session, and what do you think? And what's the crystal ball look like?
Oh, I don't have a crystal ball for that. But I did go to AMSD last Friday, and we actually did not talk about the legislature. We talked about the Minnesota Principals Survey in the sense of school principals, and it was really quite fascinating what the principals had to say. Would encourage, if anybody wants the two-page review, I'm happy to share that, and I believe there's a tape of it someplace floating around. But it was very, very interesting, as we heard from our staff and our superintendent, that principals have clearly said, they have reported that this is the most difficult year in their careers. And so, they have a lot of concerns. And mostly, it has to do with the loss of instructional time, but significantly, they see their major challenges as student mental health and staff mental health. And so, I know this board, before I even arrived here, had made a major commitment to that, so that seems very, very wise. You know, and their surveys, would you identify as most helpful supports at this stage in the pandemic? And number one and two were mental health resources for students and mental health resources for staff. And so, you know, as moving forward, public health is mental health. You know, what I learned is that the principals are a little overwhelmed right now, and I think that a lot of our systems are challenged at the moment, and, you know, there's just some things that are just being skipped, like professional development, things like that, the demands of principals and deans to be in the building a lot because of different things, they don't allow them personal development and that type of thing. But it was very, very interesting, you know, it was something like 779 school principals. So it was a very interesting presentation, I'm happy to share more if people are interested. As the legislature, I would suspect they have a surplus. I, I, I continue to believe in the area of education, we will probably see some, a little bit of help on early childhood education, especially in the reading programs. I think there's a certain commitment to that by all factions, and I also think there's a commitment from all factions to bring some more money to special education. And so, how, how, what the numbers are and things like that will go through an interesting process for four months, so that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to 916.
Yes, so I attended my first 916 board meeting last week. Yes, very exciting. I was one of, I think, four brand-new 916 board members. So it was, you know, there's a lot of onboarding for all of us that still needs to occur. I've got a meeting, actually, one-on-one with the superintendent this Friday, yep, to learn even more. But I think, you know, so I don't have a whole lot to report, other than maybe just a, a couple of highlights from the reports that they provide us. One, we had the audit report for the 2021 school year. One, one deficiency in internal controls over compliance in subrecipient monitoring requirements, all about kind of federal funding and how they re, how they report on out with the subrecipients. But there were, you know, corrective action plan was put in place, and the auditor was very comfortable with it, nothing major, and no instances of non-compliance with laws and regulations. So, a good, good audit with one kind of corrective action to be taken. The school board did vote to approve the mandatory COVID-19 vaccination and face coverings, kind of in anticipation of the OSHA law coming down, that was before the Supreme Court ruled. So, we, we had all kind of talked about as a board, well, should we just wait and kind of see how the Supreme Court rules? But the superintendent and staff said, you know, they'd already had all those measures in place as part of their own mitigation strategies that they put in place at the beginning of the school year. So it wasn't any, any news, it was just something that had already been put in place. So, the, and then as it relates to the legislative platform, they did adopt the 2022 legislative platform, and one of the things I think is consistent with what AMSD is, is kind of this focus on mental health for students. And in particular, with intermediate school districts, they all have their own legislative agenda, and with the intermediate school districts, something they're really focusing on is, is these mental health education classrooms. So really to bring mental health services into the, the building, so it's not like a separate place where students have to go to get mental health services, that can be kind of handled in the classroom setting with those professionals brought in. So it's something that they've had funding for, by the legislature provided some pilot program funding in 2017, and that funding is expiring. So they're looking to set something more, you know, long-term in, in that area. So, that is kind of the highlights of my first meeting, and I look forward to keeping you updated.
Well, and thank you again for serving that capacity. It's, it's double duty, so we appreciate you representing us.
It's really interesting, it's an area, you know, I haven't had a lot of exposure to, so I'm, I'm looking forward to learning more.
Important partnership. Move down to 7.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anybody have anything?
The Mounds View Schools Education Foundation had a meeting last Thursday, and just wanted to let everybody know that we will be having our Partnering for Education luncheon on April 14th, so hold that date if you're interested in joining us. It's a, it's a luncheon where we bring in, this year we're going to bring in an Irondale alumnus, and as well as a couple of current students at our high schools, and just share the work of the foundation with the community. That will be at the Shoreview Community Center, so look for more information in the days to come.
Thank you.
I have two fun updates from Sunnyside and Edgewood. So Sunnyside has had a longstanding tradition of the fifth graders putting on a wax museum. So they just did Wax Museum this week. So, fifth graders pick a historical figure that they want to research and do a speech on, and they get all dressed up in their, in their character, and so typically, the fifth graders would be spread around, all of Sunnyside, and parents would walk around and listen to a little speech. But with COVID, it kind of got changed, the kids just did it within their classroom, and then teachers recorded it and sent it to parents. So it's, it's been a long, like, I have friends who were students at Sunnyside who did it when they were kids, so that was a long time ago. So it's, it's just like a big thing at Sunnyside, so that was exciting. And then, eighth graders, both at Edgewood, Highview, and Chipewa, just finished up their National History Day projects. So this year's theme was debate and diplomacy in history. And so this is a huge project that takes almost the entire semester to work on projects. So it's, it's a big deal as an eighth grader to work on these History Day projects, and then they'll get graded at a district level, and, and some kids may go on to like a state and a national level. So, it's just been an exciting time for, for kids and fun projects.
Thank you. Any other updates?
I just maybe like just mention, it's a, it's finals week at our high schools, so a lot of kids are finishing up the work in their semesters, their semester classes, and really stressful time for our high school kids, so just, you know, keep supporting them and giving, giving your kids lots of love right now.
Excellent.
I was able to attend the Irondale, well, actually, the Westside Choir Festival, I guess that was about a week and a half ago. And although they weren't able to have the concert in the evening for the families of the seventh and eighth grade students from Highview and Edgewood that came over to sing with the concert choir at Irondale, they still were able to perform together in the new auditorium space. And it was really encouraging to see those students listening to the concert choir and being in that new space and considering their next steps. And I'm, I'm sure that the band and orchestra did, did similar things, that Westside Festival is always really fun. So, it was a great credit to our music staff to improvise and still provide an opportunity despite COVID and, and how that's impacted the way we can gather.
The Westside Band Festival got postponed, so we'll be looking forward to that in a couple of weeks.
There you go.
Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned, and we are going to move into the small conference room for a closed session to the...